Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone. It is March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. I would like to call this meeting to order. It is now six o'clock P. M. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one?
Madam Chair, I move that the board enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Green. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are now in executive session. Thank you. It is now seven o'clock P. M. It is March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, and we'd like to welcome you to the monthly board meeting of the Lexington One School Board. And we would also like to wish everyone a happy Saint Patrick's Day. We are looking for some pots of gold, so we need some silver linings up here. Do I hear a motion to conclude conclude executive session and begin open session?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. I would like to call to order the general session of the March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty board meeting. As you can imagine, with this unprecedented event, tonight, we will modify our board meeting. Guidelines from the C. D. C. encourage smaller gatherings and limited contact with each other. Therefore, we are holding a somewhat abbreviated meeting. With the exception of items ten point five, which is student travel request, we will vote on action items, but we will not hear reports or presentations tonight. We will defer those until a future meeting. Although we are very proud and love to celebrate our student and staff achievements, we have canceled our student achievements portion of the meeting in order to limit the number of attendees as required. District staff members have been working tirelessly to develop a plan for the next few weeks. You will be hearing more about that later in the meeting, and the district will be communicating to parents with details as they unfold. With that, we will begin the general session. I would like to notify you that we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, and that we have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting. The district also tapes this meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes. And at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Oswald for the invocation. Mr. Oswald?
Welcome everyone with prayer. Heavenly Father, may we who are merely inconvenienced remember those whose lives are at stake. May we who have no risk factors remember those most vulnerable. May we who have the luxury of working from home remember those who must choose between preserving their health or making their rent. May we who have the flexibility to care for our children when the schools close remember those who have no options. May we who have to cancel our trips remember those that have no safe place to go. May we who settle in for a quarantine at home remember those who have no home. May this pandemic bring out the best in all of us, not the worst. Help us to live by faith and not by fear, to build bridges and not barriers. May we not forget our faith, but rather draw strength from it. Strengthen us by your Spirit so that we may carry on our lives as best we're able, looking out for others, showing our love in action, being faithful in prayer, and bringing encouragement, hope, and peace. And as fear grips our country, let us choose love. During this time, when we cannot physically wrap our arms around each other, let us yet find ways to be the loving embrace of God to our neighbors. In his name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. That was beautiful. At this time, we'd like to conduct the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to call on Mike Anderson to lead us, and the flag is right here to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board in front of you is an agenda for tonight's meeting. Board in front of you is an agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, in light of the changes to our meeting necessary to comply with the governor's orders and recommendations, I move that the order of action items in section ten point O be altered so that bond resolution authorizing item ten point eight be moved to item ten point one, that the third reading of the Centerville Elementary zoning plan be moved to item ten point two, that e-learning program presentation be moved to item ten point three, and then the items follow subsequently.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Any other changes or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the agenda item changes as proposed by Ms. Green, please say aye.
Was it, was it clear in there?
It's, it's, we already done it.
Okay.
It's too late. Go ahead and ask a question. What was the question?
Well, I'm just curious. Did we say that we were moving the superintendent's report and the?
That was, that was posted out for the media. That's been posted online and has gone out to the public.
Okay, I just didn't have a copy of that agenda.
That's a good question. Okay, so we're going to take a vote with the changes that Ms. Green has submitted. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we will accept the changes to the agenda. Board in front of you, you have been providing copies of the minutes for the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty regular board meeting. Other than the corrections already provided and made, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty meeting? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as received. Okay, at this time, we're now going to go to seven point O, which are reports and action items. Do I hear a motion to approve five senior leadership members for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve five senior leadership positions for the district for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments regarding those five positions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Unan- unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve twenty-nine principals slash directors for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve twenty-nine principals slash directors for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments regarding those twenty-nine positions, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve seventeen certified recommendations for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve seventeen certified recommendations for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Are there any questions or comments regarding those seventeen certified recommendations? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve two administrative positions for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one academic year?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve two administrative positions for the recommendations for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one school year.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments regarding those two positions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. I would like to inform you that as previously previously announced online and within the guidelines for a setting an agenda, that honors and achievements have been canceled. We'll now move to nine point O, which is citizens' participation. I do have one card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board other than this one person? Okay, well, let me just, I'm, I'm, if Mr. Penya doesn't mind, I'm going to read what his topic was. He just wanted to let the administrators and the board know how much he appreciates what all they've been doing and to work through this pandemic. So, thank you, Mr. Penya. We really appreciate that. So, no one else wishes to speak, does, Ms. Hill? Okay, great. Okay. I'll, I will not read the guidelines for that then, since so, Board, scoot on over to action items, which is, action items, we're now going to number ten on your agenda. And at this time, we are going to have a motion regarding the Series two thousand and thirteen B advanced taxable bonds refunding. And let's go ahead and get the motion on the floor, then we'll get the second, and then we will have the commentary come up. And I believe Mr. Gallagher is here to share that information with us. And this is, I hate to say it, but this is a positive for the school district that directly results from the pandemic. So, we're just going to go from there. Do I hear a motion to approve the Series two thousand and thirteen B advanced taxable bonds refunding as presented?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the board adopt the bond resolution authorizing not exceeding ninety million dollars general obligation bonds of the district for the purposes of, one, refunding the district's Series two thousand and thirteen B bonds to achieve a savings and debt service payments, two, paying installment purchase agreement payments due May two thousand and twenty, and three, paying cost of issuance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. We now have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters if he'll open it up for us, and then Board will open it up for questions and comments after we've heard the commentary.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we we bring this resolution to you tonight. It's important for you to understand that this resolution simply authorizes us to to do this. It doesn't bind us to do this. So, if the market over the next few days or weeks takes a interesting turn and is not beneficial to us, then we don't have to to move forward with this resolution. But tonight, I have Mr. Mike Gallagher. He's with Compass Financial Advisors, who oversees our financial advisement. And I'd turn it over to him just to kind of brief you quickly on on the funding.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Salters. Welcome, Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening, Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. Little, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I have printed copies, and they also have a copy to put up on the screen, so whatever y'all are most comfortable with.
We'd love a printed copy, if you'll mind.
Okay. As y'all know, the market has been quite chaotic over the past couple of weeks. One of the things we noticed was there was an opportunity for your two thousand and thirteen B bonds to effect an advance refunding. You may remember that when I've been here in the past, I've told you about your bonds aren't callable for ten years. So, what this is, is you would issue these refunding bonds in two thousand and twenty. The money would sit into an escrow account, and they would pay the bonds off in two thousand and twenty-three when they become callable. The interest rate on your two thousand and thirteen B bonds, the refundable portion, you'll see down the bottom is a four point two seven percent rate. We've been monitoring the market, and best we could guess, you know, as of Friday, a two point four seven was the rate. Now, that has been wildly lower, and it has come up some. Today, the Treasuries ended up over one percent. A ten-year Treasury hadn't been under one percent probably since the beginning of time. So, that's something that, you know, this is an opportunity. It may be here, it may not. We're working to get the documentation together, so what you would need to do would be authorized moving forward with the transaction. If it isn't, the market's not good, we're going to pull the deal back. The only cost you could possibly incur would be the rating fees. Our fee and Mr. DeBeau's from Hensworth Sinclair Board, there is no fees for us if the transaction doesn't go through. But to look at this, you see the area in blue is the payment on the prior bonds. Total debt service is a hundred and twenty million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. The area in purple is what we're projecting at the new rate of two point four seven percent. These are competitively bid. It'll be put out. There'll be a POS put together. It'll be on the street for at least one week, and then we would receive bids. If the bids don't come insufficient that the net present value savings is over three percent, the resolution has a requirement that if it's not over three percent, the deal's canceled. We won't move forward with it. The only possible expense you could have would be the rating fees. Those folks don't give us an opportunity to make that a contingency, so we'll monitor it before we send it to the rating agencies, which will be about two weeks prior to the sale. We would send it to the rating agencies, have the issue rated, and then be able to get the POS on the street.
What kind of dollars are we talking about with the rating fees? Do you know? Kind of guess, right?
Rating fees would be probably a hundred thousand dollars. But, you know, that's baked into this overall transaction of an eighty-five million dollar bond issue. Now, they may give us a, they may give us a little latitude because we have other issues coming this year, but that is their, pretty much their standard. Once you put in the request and you accept the rating. So, that, but I do want to make sure you're aware of that. The area in purple is what we're projecting the new payments to be. The savings would be approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year for a total gross savings of eight point one million dollars. Because that's all payable over time, we always like to look at it at a present value. What's it worth in today's dollars? And so, that would be six point six million dollars. We like to see that PV savings be over four percent for an advance refunding. And so, this one definitely meets the test at being eight and a half. We've seen the numbers be, you know, much higher, but you really don't know till you're, till you're able to be in the market.
Madam Chair, and if I could just point out, just to highlight the volatility of the market, when Mr. Gallagher and I first had conversations about a week ago, you know, we were closer to like ten point seven million dollars in the savings. And so, you know, it could easily come back up, you know, to that, to that point. But we, you know, obviously, we'll monitor it. If you're at that level, that's almost six hundred thousand dollars a year in, you know, overall savings. So, just, you know, highlighting what's going on in the market, it's, it's an interesting time for sure.
So, Mr. Salters, it, right now, with it being as volatile as it, it could go down even before we close this deal. Is that right?
You're absolutely right. It could go down, but if you don't approve it, you don't have any opportunities for any savings.
Okay.
And, and I mean, I might point out that, and we're talking about eight point one million dollars. So, you know, even though it it has gone down, it's still an eight point one million dollar savings to the taxpayer, so that's a significant number.
All right, so if we were to compare this like a, like a mortgage refinance, because essentially, that's what we're talking about here, is a refinance of of existing money. The only difference being, though, when someone refinances their home, the the term starts over. So, if if you refinance a thirty-year term.
Yeah, and this is no extending maturities, so you see, we go to two thousand and thirty-eight. On the old bonds, we're only going to two thousand and thirty-eight. On the new, we've structured it for level savings. That way, you have the same amount of savings every single year.
And I guess with the the original bond series in two thousand and thirteen, the the principal payments, was was there a honeymoon period where where the principal payments didn't pick up, and it was just interest only for a while? Is that what?
No, what you're seeing there, the reason you're seeing no principal payments from twenty to twenty-three, those are part of the non-callable maturities, so we can't call those. So, we surely wouldn't want to include debt we cannot pay off in the refunding escrow.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. It does. And then, if we look at it at total, so we're looking at a, an eighty, we're looking to approve a ninety million dollar bond refinance, but numbers, help me find the ninety million.
The reason for the ninety million is, is we include the principal plus the interest. So, we have to borrow to pay the, make the interest payments. We'll invest it into state and local government security, so there'll be an escrow that earns some money, but it may need to, that escrow is going to need. So, you'll see where there's a negative arbitrage of three and a half million dollars. So, it's going to have to generate or care, they will not have enough to carry that three million dollars of it. But you still receive a savings of eight million dollars.
So, it's essentially the, these first four years, twenty, so twenty through twenty-three, that's what we're essentially placing in escrow to make up the difference for the ninety million.
Correct.
Got you. Okay. And if the thing falls apart, doesn't happen, does it cost us any money?
The only thing it'll cost you is the ratings fees.
So, the hundred grand?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Gallagher, are other school districts doing this as well?
We're recommended into clients. Greenville is actually taking action on one of theirs. You know, the unique thing about this is this is a taxable because the tax code doesn't allow you to do a tax exempt. Greenville's doing one where they have a hundred and three percent, a three percent call premium, and their transactions are actually actually working, and we're selling it tomorrow, so.
Okay.
And this essentially falls in the municipal bond market, correct?
Correct.
So, in the, historically speaking, in in the light of a, and we're not going to see interest rates going lower, so we have to assume our environment is only going to be going up. What do we traditionally see in a rising interest rate environment? How it impacts uni-bonds?
You're going to be locked in. The day you sell.
Right, right.
The day you sell, the day you're locked in.
But what typically happens?
I mean, you could see price, I mean, pricing is lower, but pricing is lower this year than what it was at the end of last year. But with instability in the last week, it has, is tripped up just a little bit. So, you know, I don't know where it's going to be. If I did, I probably wouldn't be here tonight.
Right.
So.
So, there's no direct correlation. They're not inversely correlated or directly correlated. It's just whatever the mood, whatever the mood is. Got you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Thank you, Mr. Salters. So, Board, we now have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Anderson gave us the motion. Ms. Green seconded it. So, all those in favor, and I'm going to reread the motion, to approve the Series two thousand and thirteen B advanced taxable bonds refunding as presented by Mr. Salters and Mr. Gallagher, please say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and it is unanimous. So, Mr. Gallagher, you go take care of us. Thank you. Thanks for watching out for that, for us. Okay, Board, we are now going to go to ten point two, which was ten point six, if you're looking at the old agenda. This is now the third reading. This is for Centerville Elementary School for the new zoning plan out in the Gilbert community. We're going to go ahead and get a motion and a second on the floor, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Do I hear a motion to approve the Centerville Elementary School zoning plan as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the administrative team's Centerville Elementary School zoning proposal as presented at third reading.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, I'm going to now turn it over to Mr. Salters, and then we'll open it up for questions and comments following his comments. Thank you, Mr. Salters.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present to you third reading of the Centerville Elementary School attendance lines. As you recall, this school will open in August of two thousand and twenty as our current schedule. And so, we are trying to establish attendance lines to to make that happen. Centerville will become a K-five school, as well as the current Gilbert primary site location will become Gilbert Elementary and also have K-five. Actually, it'll have three K through five, grade five, and Centerville will have four K through grade five. So, as you recall, rezoning is a pretty common practice in this district, and when we do this, we look at a number of considerations. We have listed here, we've, we've gone over these in the past, but using facilities efficiently is is a primary goal and minimizing, obviously, division of subdivision and other things that you see listed here. And we really try to use natural boundaries and roadways when we, when we can, so that the lines make sense and are easily discussed with the community and recognized. So, as I mentioned, that Centerville will be opening in August. This is a prototype, so this will be the fourth version of this plan that we we've built with Rocky Creek, Meadow Glen, and Deerfield being the other ones. So, that's a rendering. And it's actually starting to look like that. If you've ridden by, these, these front canopies are up, and some of the brick is starting to go up on the exterior of the building, so that's, that's pretty exciting to watch. We had a number of feedback sessions in the community, one at each of our our schools affected. And then, we also had online feedback that was solicited. We actually had forty written comments, and then thirty-eight online feedback forms filled out. So, pretty good balance of both. Really give a shout out to our communications department for for managing that process and collecting that information. Really appreciate that. There were three themes that came up in that, in that feedback. We've gone back through and looked at all the feedback, and really, since the last board meeting, after second reading to now, we only had a couple of pieces of feedback that came in, and and they fit generally in these, these categories that we have here of travel concerns, daycare concerns, and immersion program consideration. So, just to take a look at at the travel concerns, obviously, we, we have Centerville that's going to be up here in the northern part of the community. Right now, of course, this is all Gilbert Primary School attendance area and all Gilbert Elementary attendance area. So, with Centerville being built here, there's a need to to divide the the attendance area. Gilbert Elementary School resides right here, and I've highlighted some of the travel distances for you with eight point eight miles being the furthest away to Centerville in the lower portion and nine point seven in the upper portion. And that actually decreases the travel distance for those folks. And then, four miles over here, Gilbert Elementary School, we still have, these are existing travel distances because they're already going to this location at some point, ten point six miles, and then twelve point five from the the lower portion here. And so, we recognize that there are some, some students, generally speaking, in, lost my point, in this area right in here that that may have to travel near, you know, the current Gilbert Primary, future Gilbert Elementary School site. And so, the administration is recommending that we approve ten school choice slots, assuming the lines basically stay where we are recommending. Ten school choice slots available at at each school location to help with with these, whoops, I'm sorry, with these folks in this area that may want to attend Gilbert Elementary School. We, we've gotten some feedback from, from people in this area that has been mixed. I mean, many people are pleased with the lines and want to go to Centerville, which is where they're zoned, and we've had a few folks who are concerned about driving past, you know, the the current site to get to Centerville if they, you know, they have a route that they may choose to go that way. And so, we feel like these ten choice slots will give folks that are interested in staying an option.
And actually, if I could add to that just a minute, part of what we were discussing here that those ten choice slots would be reserved for people in the Gilbert attendance zone as opposed to opening up ten choice slots from across the district because it's a special rezoning opportunity. We'd like to reserve those ten slots just for the Gilbert folks, and I think that's something, I don't know we've ever done that before, but that was part of our conversation moving forward, is that there would just be ten choice slots for this area.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good point, Dr. Little. We, we have not done that historically when we've had school choice. It's been open to anybody in the district, but we feel like these slots would be designated for folks in the Gilbert attendance area. So, we feel like that, that helps alleviate some of the travel concerns that we have. And so, moving on to some daycare concerns, some of the the bigger challenges that we had were there are two daycare centers that are located on Broad Street right here, that is a portion of the attendance boundary. And they're actually on the southern portion, if you will, of Broad Street, and so, they're in the Gilbert Elementary zone. And so, there was some concern about students attending Centerville and being able to still have transportation to those, those daycares. And we've actually worked that out. If the line stays where it is, we will be able to run a bus down Broad Street and, you know, let those kids off and and, you know, make that a daycare stop so that they can attend those two daycares. So, we feel like that met the needs of of many of the the folks that were having challenges with with daycare. There are some other daycares available in the Centerville zone, and also, I would point out that Centerville will have an after-school program there locally as well, is the intention, I think, with Mr. Branham. So, so there are a number of options, but this obviously opens up two options that folks are already using. We feel like that, that'll help with that situation. And then, the immersion program, there was a good bit of discussion about immersion and a number of considerations that we've, we've looked at. Of course, there's been conversation about having the immersion program located all at one school. And i- if it was located all at Gilbert Elementary School, the current Gilbert Primary School site, basically, we would have that school open over capacity because of the volume of students that would, would be there. If you put it all at Centerville Elementary School, the the school could handle it from a capacity standpoint. However, transportation is is a big problem. In the afternoon, there are some sixty-seven students in the immersion program that ride the bus home, and so, and that divides out pretty equally, so you would be cutting off a number of students.
And that's just third, fourth, and fifth grade.
And that's just third, fourth, and fifth grade. Yes, sir. Good point. And you'd become, I'm sorry, that's just third and fourth grade, Dr. Little. You would, you would. You would be cutting off a number of students for participation in that program, potentially because of the transportation issues. So, the recommendation, you know, has come out to house a Spanish immersion program at both locations. Another consideration that was looked into was grandfathering certain grade levels, so that you might have 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade all attend Centerville as an example, and have K-1 and 2 at both, you know, both elementary schools. You know, that becomes problematic when you start incorporating siblings into the conversation, because, you know, and then you limit travel, you know, bus pickup and so forth. So, it really starts to break down when you start looking at all the variables that are associated with that. Some other recommendations were to house it all in one location and provide shuttles, or use shuttles to accomplish the grandfathering between schools. The idea of shuttles, you know, seems like it's a really good idea until you start really actually trying to implement it. Shuttle, you know, shuttle service, we have to pick up our students and get them to school first, and then you would have to ride a shuttle over. But, you know, let's just say you got them to Gilbert Elementary, and then you had to ride a shuttle to Centerville. You're potentially looking at a 10 to 15-minute, you know, shuttle ride, and then by the time you get that child into a classroom settled and ready to learn, it could be as much as 20 to 30 minutes. And then you flip that around in the afternoon and do the same thing. It really becomes problematic, because they've gotta get back to the other elementary school, so they can catch their, you know, homebound bus. So, you could potentially lose 45 minutes to an hour of instruction every day by doing the shuttle service. And, you know, we feel like that's a really a big loss for our students. And so, what our recommendation is to provide full immersion programs, again, at both locations. This will result in smaller class sizes, you know, in the upper grade levels for a few years. But we feel like that's actually a good thing, when you have lower class sizes and more direct contact with teachers. The other key benefit here is that transportation is provided for all students. And so, by having it at both locations, they just get on their normal school bus and ride. And so, that becomes a very convenient thing, and it doesn't limit anyone from having access to the immersion program in these areas. We have stated here that emerging students who live outside of the Gilbert attendance area, that are currently enrolled in the program, will work with them and place them, you know, where the enrollment best fits by grade level in the district. So, that's kind of our take with the immersion, and Dr. Little, you wanna?
Yeah, if you don't, yes, I'll jump in. I really think the full immersion programs at both Gilbert and Centerville serve as a win-win for both groups, because of the significant afternoon ridership. You know, in the past, what has happened is when we've, when we have rezoned, and you move from, you know, whatever it was, when we did Meadow Glen and Meadow Glen Elementary and Midway Elementary and New Providence, we did that rezoning. You know, what can happen there is that people are still relatively within the geography of the other school. And so, this Board has historically not done transportation out of zone to attend an immersion program, because it's relatively close by. Certainly here in a, in the Gilbert situation, where it represents 1/3 of our entire school district, that certainly could be much more problematic. And so, I look at that as really a win-win. It's a smaller class size for a couple of years, certainly. But overall, none of those parents will have to choose between transportation or other things and attending the program. They have that opportunity to do so. And I think, and I think they're both will eventually be, you're planning to see that both programs that will continue to flourish for years to come.
Okay. So, looking at our projected enrollments, right now, with our numbers, Centerville would open at 705 students approximately, and this is, you know, grades K-4 through grade 5. And then Gilbert Elementary would be approximately 816 students, K-3 through grade 5. And I'll just tell you that when we did Beechwood, I think we showed a number of, you know, approximately 900 students enrolled at Beechwood. And I think on the 45th day, there were 900 students enrolled at Beechwood. And I'll be the first to tell you that, well, you know, we're pretty good at this stuff, because we've done it a long time. We're really not that good. But it's a lot easier to project middle school enrollment, because most, if not all, in some cases of the students are already in your system. And so, you can just see the cohorts go up, and you have a growth factor, and that's it. Elementary schools are a little bit different, because you don't know how many kindergarten students are actually out there, and how many kindergarten students are gonna show up to enroll. And so, it's a little bit of a different animal with elementary, but we anticipate those numbers being very close to start with in these two attendance areas. So.
Can you go back and say what your goal was for Gilbert Elementary?
As far as the capacity?
Yeah, where you wouldn't want, where's the?
Yeah, so, you know, we're really, that's a good point. Gilbert Elementary School, when you start getting into the 870 range or so, you really start to run out of space. And I'll tell you that Mr. Moody would probably tell you they're comfortable here, tightly comfortable. And as you start adding more and more students, you're going to get into a situation where they have people, you know, in nooks and crannies that, you know, we really would rather not use for students. And certainly, we don't wanna get into a situation where we have to use portable classrooms in Gilbert Elementary School. That would kind of defeat the purpose. And so, that's why we've kind of created that buffer. We do anticipate some growth. While I've got this slide up, I can show you. There's a good bit of growth occurring up here on Highway 378. There's a good bit of growth right down from the school. There's a neighborhood going in right here. This area right in here, MacArthur Road, all in that area, there's some stuff going on there with, I'm sorry, MacArthur down in here, Gilbert Elementary School's area. And Deerfield sits right here, so good bit of growth in this area of Gilbert. And so, we have some buffer built in, and additionally, if you'll recall, we will be repurposing the current Gilbert Elementary School site as a 4K center in the near future. And that will allow for the 4K and 3K programs that are housed at both of these locations, taking up classrooms to be relocated, and that gives them additional capacity in the future. So, we're timing that out, so that those classrooms open and are ready for the future growth that we anticipate in both areas. So, so looking at the lines specifically, we are not recommending any changes to the lines from second to third reading. I've got the, you know, the lines highlighted here, but basically, you know, this area follows Wire Road. We come into the town area. This is obviously Louie, and then we kind of take a little jog here, and then this is follows Broad Street. And again, this is where the daycares are that we would be able to serve if the line remains the same. Comes down to Green Hills Drive, gets on to Croupp Pond, and then this is kind of the follow-up to that. The connecting point would be up here, so Croupp Pond continues on down. You grab AC Balknight and Camp Branch, and then finish up off here on Two Notch. Just for your orientation, this is Lexington 3, and on the previous slide, this little sliver up here is Deerfield. So, sorry, going the wrong way. So, we're not recommending any changes from second reading to third reading to the lines. And just to recap briefly, you know, immersion programs, we said, will be offered at both locations. 3- and 4-year-old offering would be at Gilbert Elementary, 4K at Centerville. Currently, no grandfathering planned at this time, because all rising 5th graders would actually change physical school locations. And then 3- and 4-year-old programs will move to the new Gilbert attendance area, early childhood center in the future, as I mentioned. That'll create some capacity for us. I have these meetings up here just as a recap. You spent a lot of time looking at these lines and working through this process, going all the way back to January, when we had first reading. And then we had our community input meetings in February with second reading, and obviously, we're here today with third reading. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding the lines.
Mr. Salters, what is the target date for the 4K facility to open? Do we have a date nailed?
So, we're looking basically, and Dr. Little, you may have some other ideas, but we're looking at this coming year being kind of a planning year. And so, the center, we would hope to open two years from now. And that's, you know, that's our goal.
That'd be a relief valve for the?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Did you wanna add to that, Dr. Little?
No, that's what I was gonna say. We had to slow that down just a little bit, as we were really trying to make sure we grabbed a model for that program. We wanted to make that, make sure that was an excellent model, and of course, the idea with putting a children's museum and some other ideas that we wanted to put together, felt like we needed to be able to measure twice and cut once.
Ms. Hill, just to clarify on the response from the community, have you had additional response since you last provided that?
There's no responses that added since we last updated the February meeting.
Okay.
And even those responses are only a repetition of the ones you already?
Okay, great. And I did ask Mr. Branham and Mr. Moody to get that out to the community. So, and I did speak with Mr. Moody, and he said adding the 10 slots at each school, that seemed to answer the issues that the parents, that he had spoken with, that answered the issues they had, and he was very appreciative that you did that. Any other questions? Dr. Guyton?
Yeah, so the last time I had kind of asked about the immersion, and it seemed like the majority of the feedback we were getting was trying to keep those classes together, if you will. And as I kind of looked at it some more, and of course, as you guys looked into it, that seems to be less of a line issue. Because, I mean, if you got somebody up at Top of Shore Road and somebody down at Austin, I mean, there's no good line you could draw to keep those classes together, if you will. So, I think that issue may be less of a lines issue and more towards that programmatic side. So, you know, obviously, I think if there were an unintended consequence to come out of that by disruption of those, I'm assuming we could address that from the programmatic side, as opposed to the physical line side. Would that be, would that be a fair statement, I guess?
I think, I need you to be a little more specific. I don't know what you mean, that we can address it from a programmatic side.
Just meaning that if it became so disruptive by the, by breaking up the classes, if you will. I mean, I think we've done all we can do, essentially, by providing immersion at both schools. But it's, you know, if the desire is to keep, if the desire would be to keep the classes together, I think the only potential thing that could come into play, there would be a special consideration for attendance. But that would involve transportation provided by the parent. That's obviously not something we could provide.
Correct.
Okay.
And if I could just point out, Dr. Guyton, that the immersion classes are kind of shuffled every year. So, I don't necessarily, and Dr. Little, you may speak to this more, since your daughter's involved, but I don't go, you know, from 2nd grade to 3rd grade with the exact same, you know, 20, 25 students in my class. They get shuffled within that class, I mean, within those couple of classes every year. So, you know, this is kind of a normal process that would occur in that.
And it's temporary. That's the other thing, it's temporary. You know, this is gonna be a short-lived problem. And I think that's the, again, not that, it's not an issue, and I certainly can understand where the parents are coming from, but it's a short-lived issue.
Right.
So, the benefit, you know, sometimes when you deal with these situations, I think what we try to do is, is here's the best we can do. I'm having a hard time seeing you, I'm sorry. That computer screen is kind of in the way. But, you know, sometimes it's about the best, you know, so here's an issue, so we can't really resolve it this way, but here's a way we can mitigate it.
Right.
And I think you'll see that in a number of the solutions that you have here, you know, the 10 choice slots just for the Gilbert folks. I think that helps mitigate those folks that are really having a problem with that. We can really try to minimize that. And I think likewise with the immersion program, because so many of them deal with different versions of transportation, it really allows them to take advantage of the immersion program and not have to choose about whether or not, you know, we can reorganize our entire life to make sure somebody goes and picks up the child from school, after school, to go to daycare or wherever they can go. So they have that opportunity to do so. So, yes, they'll be split up from their friends for temporarily, because they're all going to Gilbert Middle School. But on the flip side is, they get smaller class sizes, and everybody gets an opportunity to continue in the program. And that's a pretty good thing, I think, in terms of mitigation.
Well, and most importantly, the academics are preserved. And so, by maintaining the immersion at both sites, we, you know, you've maintained the commitment to the community about the academics of immersion, which is the best possible thing, I think, that you could do. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Board?
I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. A couple of things I noticed as I went back through here, some of these questions hadn't not been answered. One of those being an employee who works at another location whose kids attend Gilbert. Do employees not have school choice?
They have employee choice.
Okay, okay. So, I guess y'all will take care of that. She'll still be able to, okay. How's the district going to staff K through 5 Spanish immersion at both schools, when we've had issues in the past staffing just one of these? I know on here it says the teacher came around Thanksgiving, but another one told me that the teacher didn't actually come, and this may be a different class as well, until January. So, do we know if we have enough Spanish immersion teachers to staff both locations?
According to HR, we do.
According to HR, we have plenty.
Or we will. I mean, I don't know that they've been hired at the moment, but we will have them by next year.
Okay.
I think we approved some tonight.
We approved two tonight. But I don't think those were both Spanish. I think one of them may have been a different language. So, they have not been hired yet, is what you're saying.
Well, we haven't approved this plan yet either, so that's, after this, we'll start doing that stuff too.
Then another lady made a comment about transportation. Buses, you haven't fixed the issues this year. Our children lose instruction. This is very important. I get notifications all the time that buses are running late, and I know in the mornings, buses arrive to schools late. That's just something we need to look at in general. I just feel like if people are gonna take the time to fill out these forms, I'd at least like to try to answer their questions. One mentioned Spanish immersion at Rocky Creek. So I understand some of those parents, those kids are going to Gilbert from Rocky Creek. Do we have any plans to expand the immersion program to Rocky Creek?
We do not. They already have a coding, computer science immersion program there.
Okay. Just, I guess, the lines in general. Some people are upset that they live right there, almost within walking distance of the school, and they still have to drive to Centerville. Which leads to one of these questions. With Gilbert growing rapidly, why doesn't Pillion absorb some of the area south of I-20, instead of those people driving to Gilbert?
We have, you know, similar issues in Gilbert with capacity. We're adding classrooms to Forts Pond Elementary School, which would be the attendance area that that school touches. And so, it would not make sense to send students to Forts Pond and overload Forts Pond when we have capacity at Gilbert Elementary School, at least at this point. And that's something that may be looked at, you know, in the future. More than likely, down the road, there'll be an elementary school that sits between Forts Pond and Gilbert Elementary School, you know, to serve that area.
What about Pillion Elementary? Are they near capacity as well?
They're in a similar situation, but again, they're further away, so you would actually drive, if you're looking at the geography, you would drive past Forts Pond Elementary School to get to Pillion Elementary School. So, you'd be sending students that are, you know, currently in the Gilbert zone, at the bottom of that zone, down past Forts Pond, and get them to Pillion Elementary School. So that doesn't really make a lot of sense, either. They'd be going through one attendance area to get to another one.
Right. Kind of like we're doing in Gilbert, driving past Gilbert Elementary.
No, this is, it would not be the same thing.
But there's still, like, those, you would have to pass one to get to the other, which is basically what most of these people are complaining about.
When I say we're passing, you would actually be driving 10 miles to get to Forts Pond, and then driving another whatever mile, two miles to get to Pillion Elementary School. In this situation, when you're talking about driving, you're literally driving, if you're in here, well, let me go back to the one that has the distances. The furthest point down here is eight and a half miles, and there are routes to go here and then over here. So you can choose to go this way if you want to, and that may be a more convenient route, depending on what you're doing. But in situations like this, you would be driving, and I can't even do it, because the map isn't, doesn't have it demonstrated, but you'd be driving way down here off. off the screen, and then sliding over to another attendance area. Um, and so it's, it's a much different commute than what you're talking about here.
Right. I'm just saying like what the people are complaining about is kind of the same thing.
And I think that was one comment.
Right. Um, okay, why are you planning to make Centerville so different from the other Gilbert schools? Why not keep the red and black colors and the Indian themes?
Each school has their own identity, and that's, that's up to the, the, the school community there. And, uh, you know, the board, and, and we did a lot of research, and the board named the, the, the school, Centerville Elementary School, because that's the Centerville history and legacy of that community. There was a school there, um, and so each school in the district has their own identity. And eventually, and I would also add to that, eventually, um, if you look, you know, off this map to, to the right here, you've got all of these different elementary schools, and, and as you can see, uh, you know, fast forward 20, 25 years, this is gonna look the same way. And so you're gonna end up probably, you know, at some point down the road, having another middle school, at some point down the road, having another high school. And so when you start having schools tied to, um, those, that same color and feel, you end up in situations, you know, like Lexington Elementary School was for a while, where they're the, you know, they're tied to the Lexington High School colors, but, but some of their students end up at River Bluff. Uh, and so as, as you continue to grow, you can't really maintain that. That's why we encourage each school to have their own identity.
Okay. So, that's made at the school level, I guess. Um, I mean, just a couple of comments. I would really have liked this email this teacher sent us where she explained how we could save six FTEs and four FTEs, and I understand that y'all said transportation and shuttling is an issue. Um, but I would like to see something like she has broken down, broken down from administration and presented to us, saying, this is why it won't work, this is how many students we have on the bus, this is how many students would be car riders, um, you know, and then go through the different options of staggered start times and just give us things to look at so we could decide, you know, okay, we can take part of this here and part of that there. Um, but that's just some comments going forward. Um, and as I mentioned at the last meeting, I would like, before we do any kind of rezoning, to have some kind of committee put together that's made up of teachers, bus drivers, parents, before it actually comes to the board for first reading, because that would work out a lot of the kinks before it ever got to us.
Any other questions or comments, Board? Mr. Oswald?
I'd like to say something about transportation. Since I was a bus driver back in 1969, 70, and I had the longest bus route in the district, which was in Gilbert. But I, I think by dividing the attendance area up, it's gonna probably, correct me if I'm wrong, solve some of the bus scheduling issues and bus times. The routes won't be as long, they'll be cut in half. So, probably we won't have a lot of those issues to have to deal with.
Well, you certainly bring up a good point, Mr. Oswald. I mean, some of the routes will, will be cut down considerably, and so that will help. Um, you know, on those travel times and distances for students on the bus.
I think a lot of folks don't understand, it is the largest attendance area in the district. I mean, it's seven, it's 17 miles long. So, that presented, always presented a transportation problem and scheduling, so just, just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Did you bus students to the old Centerville?
I'm sorry?
Wasn't there an old Centerville Elementary? Did you?
That would've been a horse and carriage.
You, you can throw a shoe at him, Mr. Oswald. Anybody else with questions or comments, Board? Okay. We will go back, let's go back to our motion. We have a motion from Mr. Oswald to approve the Centerville Elementary School zoning plan as presented, and, um, we have a second from Ms. Green. And I do want to make one comment. I want to thank Mr. Salters and his team and Dr. Little. I also want to thank Mr. Moody and Mr. Branham. There is a lot that goes into doing this, and people don't realize it's, you guys have really done some heavy lifting, so thank you. So, we now have a motion and a second. All in favor of the zoning plan as presented for Centerville Elementary School, please say aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. So, we have, let's see, three, four, five. We have five in favor and one opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, we are now going to go to, we're gonna go back to eLearning, which was 10.1, which is now 10.3. Um, and while he is getting Mr. Bissell, we'll go ahead and get the motion on the floor, and then we'll open it up from, um, Mr. Salters and Mr. Bissell and Dr. Little to discuss this. So, Board members, uh, you've heard the recommendation at our last meeting by the administration for the eLearning program. Do I hear a motion to approve the program as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the eLearning program as presented by administration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Anderson. Okay, and, um, when, there he is. Wow, you switched places. Okay, we now have Mr. Bissell with us, but I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Little first to kind of open this up for us, and then we'll let, uh, Mr. Bissell do his presentation.
Certainly, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Uh, very excited tonight to have, uh, Mr. Bissell here to discuss our eLearning plan. Um, the, our reality has changed quite a bit since the last time we met. Uh, last time I talked to you, we talked about we needed five months of planning and that our capacity would be about five days after those five months worth of planning. Uh, instead, this week, we are going to do about 48 hours-ish worth of planning, sum up to about 72. I think it's 48 to 72 hours. And, uh, we're gonna do 12 days worth, and that will be a minimum, um, of 12 days, and we, we certainly anticipate that might actually get much longer than that. Um, and before he, before he says anything, I, I want to say one other thing. I cannot tell you how proud and pleased I am with how our schools and how our staffs have tackled this challenge. Um, it is an amazing thing to see. I sent them an email this afternoon that, that really captured it when I said, we turned the impossible and made it possible. Uh, what you're seeing is incredibly difficult, and I don't want to let that to be lost in the great planning that they've done. Is sometimes the plan is so good, it seems seamless and almost effortless, and it is none of those things. Um, Mr. Bissell and his team have, have worked incredibly hard. Teachers have worked tirelessly. They have jumped into the deep end in getting all of these materials ready, of turning their, um, their analog classrooms into digital classrooms and maximizing their technology, and they've done so with great spirit. And I don't know if I would call it enthusiasm, but certainly they've done it with, with incredible professionalism. And many of them have been enthusiastic as well. But that is an incredible challenge, and I'm just, I cannot be, be more pleased with my team. I can't be more pleased with the staff of Lexington One. The expertise and experience in this district are second to none, and I'm just really blown away by what we've seen over the last couple of days. And to be able to do it so, so again, I say seamlessly and effortlessly, it's a, it's a, it's, it really reflects, it's a testimony, it's an inspiration to their professionalism and hard work and effort, and their dedication to empowering each child to design the future. And I, and I can't, I cannot be more pleased. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Howard now, and, and Howard, what I want, what I'd like for you to talk about is certainly the plan, but also capture some of the work that's been done this week because our eLearning plan has been fast-tracked pretty significantly.
How about now? Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board, Dr. Little. Uh, so, yeah, it certainly has been an interesting, uh, three or four or five days. Um, it has been, um, uh, a, a challenge, uh, and it has been extremely rewarding, uh, to work alongside such dedicated professionals, uh, to mobilize, um, in a, in a time of, of disruption. But disruption is a, is an opportunity for leadership, and that's what our, our folks have done, and so very, very proud to be a part of that process. Um, we, uh, we talked on March 3rd, as Dr. Little mentioned, about a, a plan for eLearning days in the event of inclement weather and, uh, subsequent school cancellation, and now we're talking about eLearning days to do something fundamentally different. Um, and that is, um, really something to, it's, it's difficult to wrap your head around at, at first, and, and particularly, um, if you're, um, if you're, if you're, if you're turning everything around in, in a fast manner. Um, but this is gonna look different than what a weather cancellation eLearning would, a day would be, and it's gonna have to. Because we're, we're, we're looking at really focusing on continuity of growth and development of our, of our students in both models. But in this particular instance, it's gonna have to be so much more for our students. Um, our schools exist to provide for students, their, their basic needs, uh, their right, right to a quality education, um, and, uh, and all the things that, that happen for them at schools. We can't take for granted that they're necessarily happening at home when they're not able to come to our schools. And so this event isn't necessarily about what we need them to do for us, but it's more about what we need to do for them while, while we're working through this process. Um, it's not about the work that they need to get taken care of in order to make sure that they're making it through a particular scope and sequence, but more about what we can do to reach out and help them provide, or provide some continuity of growth and development for them. So, I say that and, uh, reflect a little bit on the, uh, the opportunity that we've had to work with the leaders that came in yesterday on Monday, principals and instructional coaches and, and building leaders. We had an opportunity to talk to them a little bit about establishing their why for about what we're about to do, establishing the context for how we're going to shape the approach that we take and the conversations that we have when we talk to our teachers, um, when, when they came in and, or, or teleconferenced in today and, and got started planning for 48 hours, 48 hours worth of planning to launch on, on Thursday morning. And, and we said, you know, let, let's think about what we're here to do and what we're here to provide, and let's think less about pacing guides. Let's think less about academic achievement as far as standardized test scores go, and let's think about maintaining relationships with our students during this time so that we can give them what it is that they need. And, um, the, the response to that was really, I was just inspiring. Um, I walked around and, and I, I heard conversations that people were having, not about what assignments can we provide, or what templates can we put together to give to teachers so that they can lesson plan, but having conversations about individual students and what their needs are gonna be, and how this student is transitioning from al- alternative education services, and they're, they're gonna need a very specific plan during this time, or how this student is going to need to, um, have some very specific, um, content and support and a, and a communication plan because they, they can't afford to lose a credit at this point right now, uh, this, this late in the year. Um, I heard middle school teams talking about what their communication plans are gonna be for leveraging their advocacy time, and how their teachers are gonna have hours and take turns calling into students and making sure that if they're not getting responses digitally through our learning management systems, that there's a plan for, for contact and support in, in, over whatever medium that may be. And so it was just really uplifting to hear the vision of our instructional leadership work through the individual, um, circumstances of their students and, and put together what are some really amazing plans in a matter of about 24 or 36 hours, since we learned that that cancellation was gonna go into effect on Monday. So, that's really just a snapshot of, of what's happened recently, but the work that's being done, um, with our school leaders and with our teachers right now to do what's right for kids and, and get them the things that they need, not just from a pedagogical standpoint or a technical standpoint, um, but really from a logistical standpoint, and how do you pull that together? And, and elementary, we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to provide digital learning opportunities for everyone. What do those logistics look like in getting students access to materials? Um, so, I'll start there and say that because of the turnaround, I, I'll say we had what I, what I thought was a viable plan for us to, to do eLearning or, or, or a digital approach in grades three through five, and the timing made that impossible to turn around. Um, so, but we did think about what can, consistency in child or, or student growth and development looks like, and how that can't be just your tip, you know, your, your packet of papers and worksheets that are put together. So, uh, our instructional coaches and, and core content coordinators have worked with, with principals and with, with teachers to put together meaningful exercises for each grade level. Um, and, and have, have pulled together in, in the most amazing ways to print those packets and assemble those packets and, and come up with logistics and, and supply chain for, uh, for making those available. Um, we're gonna have them available online for those that have the means to access them that way. For those that don't, we'll have, we'll have opportunities for them to pick them up through our car lines. We'll have, uh, folks from schools that are, are, or from central services that will be able to go out and make deliveries if they need to. We're gonna do what we need to do and leverage all of our human resources, uh, to get the kids what they need. Um, and so we're excited about that plan for consistency and continuity at the elementary level. In grade six through 12, we are taking a digital approach because we have that, uh, that type of, um, capacity built there, and we have the, the equipment and the, and the software in place to do so. We're gonna leverage our learning management system as a base platform, uh, for teachers to engage with students, provide resources for them, uh, to, to engage with, um, but also leverage some telecommunications, um, technology to, to open it up so that we can have some direct conversations with them, or small groups of students. And that'll also be how our teachers will be collaborating, uh, with administrators in their building and with, um, and, and with, uh, with teachers on, on the grade level or, or across their building. So, it really has been a team effort to get all that in place. Um, you know, our, our communications department, our, our information technology department, our instruction department has really pulled together to support the schools in this process. Uh, but the, the things that the teachers are putting together are, are things that, you know, they're, it's not, it's not just, you know, here's a lesson and, and do some questions. It's, it, they're providing engaging material for students so that it's, it's, you know, more of an invitation for, for them to engage and, and less of an intervention for, for them to say, this is what needs to happen. And so I'm really proud of the approach that they're taking there. And I think it's going to, um, speak volumes to our students' consistency and continuity and, and, and growth over these days, however long that may be. We do know we're good for 12 days, though. We've got that, got that planning taken care of, and we'll just, uh, we'll adjust as, as we have to. Um, I'm confident that we'll be able to. Um, I feel like if we were able to, to turn around what we've turned around in, in the last 48 and, and maybe the next, the next 36, if we have to make some adjustments for the long term after that, I, I feel confident we'll be able to do so. And our teacher skill sets are only gonna grow as they engage in this opportunity and, and work with students. So, I'm sorry, if I was a little long-winded there, I'm real excited about what we've been able to do, and, uh, um, looking forward to launching on Thursday. I know that it won't be perfect and, and we'll make mistakes, but, um, Dr. Little, if you don't mind, uh, I'm really, uh, moved by his approach and, and giving us our charge the other day and said, if we make mistakes, we're gonna make mistakes because we're just trying to do what's right for kids, and we'll make, uh, we'll make adjustments and we'll make iterations, and we'll learn from that, and uh, I'm just, uh, excited to have an opportunity to be a part of leading that charge. We have to answer any questions.
Any questions, Board, for Mr. Bissell?
Yeah, I think originally we were, we were looking at plugging a hole in the Hoover Dam, and I think you guys have just built the Hoover Dam. And so, uh, on the most granular level, uh, since the rollout happens on Thursday, and you talked about a five-day window previously.
Right.
Does, so does this past Monday actually become day one? And then we've got a five-day window, meaning that day one will count towards attendance, but we have five days in which to, um, to make up that work, if you will. Is that, is that how this is gonna work? I've, I've had a couple of questions about that.
Sure. No, that, that's, that's an excellent question. I, I failed to, to mention that piece of the structure. That's, that's, that's one of the, the fundamental pieces of this that will be different than what we would do if we were to, to miss one day or two days next fall in a weather makeup day situation. Um, this, this isn't going to be tied to attendance. Um, it's going to be merely about providing the, the, the continuity and support that students are going to need in, in, in an environment where they won't have the type of supports that we can guarantee that they'll have while they're with us and during our school day. So, those opportunities are gonna be out there for them to engage with them, and then we're gonna engage in our, in our, in our advocacy groups and, and strategies to reach out and, and try to pull kids in uh, the best that we can while we're, while we're going through this period. So, there, there won't be necessarily a grace period tied to it. Um, there won't be attendance that's, that's taken necessarily. Um, but, uh, we're gonna do the best we can to provide engaging experiences and connect with students so that we can try to keep them engaged throughout that time and, and hopefully be able to, to pick up with that when, when we do get back to face-to-face.
So, you're looking at it as a collective, basically. The, the amount of information you can get in within this window of this time period that we're out. And, and whatever, whatever advancement that looks like, not necessarily tied to, um, uh, test scoring or achievement, but, but more of mastery of the, the content.
Yes, uh, yeah, essentially, sir. We're, we're, so we're, we're thinking, we're asking teachers to think about what their long-term goals are and what their short-term goals are. And, um, you know, we, we want to establish through what the, the expectations we put out there for students, opportunities for them to chip away at those short-term goals so that when we get to whatever, the end of whatever period this is gonna be, they're, they're close to where, you know, we know we want them to, to, to end up. So that when we get to whatever, the end of whatever period this is going to be, they're, they're close to where, you know, we know we want them to, to, to end up. Outside of that, it may be less content-driven and more what do these individual students need? Now, there may be some things that are driving our efforts, say, students that are, you know, working towards certification exams. And, and high school. Or we know that there, there may be some implications for state testing. But if students have been plugging away real hard on AP courses all year for a college board exam. Now, there's some really specific pacing and, and, and standards that need to be considered there. But ultimately, we're, we're trying to focus on a whole-child approach. And make sure that our kids are getting what they need while they're not with us every day.
How are we dealing with connectivity for all of our students, make sure everybody's got it?
So, great, great question. So, we've, we distributed a survey when we, along with the, with the announcement that we were going to have to close. It was a, a fairly simple survey and, and we asked parents to respond if, if they were able to. And let us know if they have internet connectivity and if they have a, a device at home that their students could use. For, for, for digital learning if necessary. And so, in a very short time, we had some seven thousand responses. And, and, and so that was very encouraging. Now, now fully realizing that if there's not that kind of connectivity at home, it might be difficult to, to submit that form. So, the approach that we're going to take to that is to take all of the respondents, cross-reference that with our rosters and Power School. And then where, you know, where we don't have duplication, then we'll know the folks that weren't able to respond. And then we'll lean on our schools and our central services staff to reach out to those folks. And then complete that data set and figure out exactly which families do not have access at home. From there, we'll leverage some, some resources that we have here, human resources, to reach out to those families. And see what we can do to get them in contact with some of our providers like Comporium and, and Spectrum. To take advantage of some of the free internet access.
Spirit Communications was doing that too, weren't they?
That's right, so what's complicated about it is because we're so big geographically. The, the carriers, their, their coverage maybe overlaps in places or, or doesn't at all. And so, we'll have to engage some of the partnerships that we can make with multiple carriers to try to canvas the entire geographical area. So, that, that'll be a fairly, I think it'll be a fun project, but it's going to be fairly intense in crunching that data. And, and, and then you have the communication aspect of reaching out and then trying to put those people in touch with, with those providers. So that we can establish access. My hope is that we can get that turned around fairly soon. But, you know, we're going to do what, what we can do and, and work within that system. So that we can try to reach every family and give them the opportunity.
And before we take other types of solutions, like say, you know, some people are driving buses out. Some people are, we have a couple of other ideas to, to increase connectivity. I've been talking with superintendents the last few days from, from a couple of different states about how they're handling this. So, we're going to do, this is our first approach. And then we're going to use some other opportunities, say like, can, can the fire department strengthen the wifi? Can we get the fire department strengthen their wifi and pull down the password for a few days, you know, that kind of stuff? Can we do that at our own schools? You know, can we bump the bubble up and, and, you know, have a, have a opportunity for them to connect that way too? So, we're, we're, we're working on a couple of different ways to get down that road a little bit.
Just to be clear for parents and students, this is not a voluntary program. It's mandatory, am I right? Participation in this?
It's school, yes, sir.
It's school.
It's school, yep. It's a different looking, it's a different kind of school.
Think that it's, you know.
No, sir, it's school and it's a different kind of school. It's a different-looking school. You may be eating Fruit Loops and Cheerios while you're attending in your pajamas, but you, you're still at school.
Okay, so truancy factors will still come into play or?
Well, that, that's, that's a different, that's a different element at the moment when the governor closes everybody. So that we're not worried so much about the attendance piece. We're, we're worried about the, as Howard just mentioned, the connectivity, bringing people in, building relationships, making them a part of the process.
Okay, very good. I know y'all have worked so hard on this and thank you on behalf of all of our students and parents and teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Bissell, I really appreciate all that y'all have done. I mean, I'm so impressed with what you've done with such a short window. I have two high school students, I'm just going to, I would like for you to dispel a couple of, or maybe explain a couple of the rumors. Or I guess what they've been told. My daughter is a senior and this is an extremely traumatic time for high school seniors. Because the last few weeks of their senior year, which is like the swan song, has all of a sudden been ripped away from them. And many of them are taking AP exams or AP classes. And those, you know, they still have a month of content to learn before they take those tests. And then my younger son is in ninth grade and he's taken three classes that culminate with an end-of-course exam. And the message they have received is that during this e-learning time, that teachers are not allowed to deliver new content. Or do any sort of assumptive assessment. And my ninth grader says, yay, no tests. And my senior says, those tests are really important. And so, where, is that true? And if so, I mean, how do, how do you accomplish the growth for these? I mean, I can understand holistic, you know, delivering for each child for nine, ten, eleven-year-olds, twelve-year-olds. But for, you know, in high school, by the time you get to senior year, there's one class of everything. And those classes have specific end goals by, you know, by the middle of May. How is that going to be accomplished if it's more of a, the whole child? I don't know.
Can we bring in Dr. Tally? I, I think the, some of these questions go hand-in-hand with Mr. Bissell and Dr. Tally. Dr. Tally, can you step in for a minute? I just, I think she needs to hear this too, because.
I, I can, I can certainly speak to that. So, when we talk about creating an experience that, that engages the whole, whole child. A, a piece of that whole child or there, is there academic aspirations, right? And, and their, and their academic achievement? And so, I spoke a little bit to the concept of establishing long-term goals and short-term goals over the period of the next twelve days, three weeks, whatever that may be. And so, in, in the instance where there's a student that has, that has a, an AP exam coming up. That, that's what's going to mean the, be the best support we can provide for that student. Is to keep them on that pace and that scope and sequence. And make sure that they're, that they're prepared for, for that exam. So they can be successful on that exam. So, in those instances where we ask teachers to think about, you know, what are you, what is going to be the best thing for your students at this point in time? For that class, it will be staying on pace and checking in with them and checking for their understanding. And providing intervention and giving them the practice exams and questions and, and opportunities to, to discuss and collaborate with each other. So, that will be engaging all of their needs at, at that point. So, I think that on a, on a philosophical level, we want to say, this isn't going to be just about completing work. And assignments in every class across the board. But it may be the case that there is a very distinct focus on scope and sequence and pacing and, and content knowledge. If in fact, that is what's going to help students to meet their, their, their goals.
So that, so the, the story the students are, I guess, hearing that there is going to be no new content delivered, that is not true.
Go ahead.
Let me respond to that if I may. I too want to thank Mr. Bissell and his team, they've done amazing work, as have our coordinators and our principals and our teachers. We, I had to submit on behalf of Dr. Little, an emergency distance learning plan. I did that Sunday evening. And there's some, there's some assurances in that plan that districts have to commit to. Some being constant monitoring by the teacher of the student's work. That's for elementary, middle and high school. Also for special needs children, monitoring and our ESOL children. And we could not start this launch without having that plan approved. And it was approved Monday morning. So, we, we are being held accountable for continuous learning. Now, AP courses are a different animal. I taught high school AP English. And you do have to stay on top of that. And you've got to focus on that in order to get a credit, to get college credit, a score high enough to get college credit. You, I heard, I didn't hear all the questions, but I did, I hear you, I heard you spoke about testing and of course, testing. I don't know if Dr. Little shared with you or not, but Superintendent Spearman in the conference call on Sunday. We've had so many conference calls, my days are running together. But on Sunday afternoon, she told the superintendents that she would be, as other states have done, apply for a waiver. Relative to state and federal testing. Now, that's separate from AP testing. But Shane Phillips is looking into that today for us to, to decide what the college board is going to do about that. There are a lot of rumors out there though, on the part of students. We launch on Thursday, as Howard has told you. But I promise you, our, our teachers are on top of this and they're going to have. They've talked about the relationships with their students and how important it is to continuously check in with them. We've got, at the secondary level, we've got our technicians available in the event. We've got a help desk call in they can make, so I feel really pretty good about our plan.
And I think that's very reassuring. You know, like the, one of the, part of my question was the end-of-course tests. And those are state, not federal, right? And so, that would be, I guess, the Education Oversight Committee would waive that requirement. But I guess go into, we're in a completely different landscape than we've ever been. So, nobody knows what's going to be the situation in the middle of May with this. But, you know, I'm just wondering, just thinking through how, you know, the end-of-course tests are required by law to be twenty percent of a student's grade. Well, I'm assuming since, I mean, I just don't know how even grades are going to work with.
And I'll be honest with you, nor do we. And we're taking our guidance from the Department of Ed. And all the state superintendents in the country are having the same conversation. We just learned while we were in this room that the state of Kansas has canceled school for the rest of the year. So, we are in virginal territory, but we're smart people, we're good people. And, and we're in, in this together and we're going to figure it out. I guess that the, my advice would be to allay your children's concern and let's just take one day at a time.
Ultimately, our, our teachers are, their directive is to do what's going to be right for whatever students they're, they're interacting with. And so, thinking deeply about what are their needs and not necessarily what are my curriculum needs is the, is the dynamic we're talking about there.
I have to say, I'm a little bit hopeful that this time next year, we'll look back and say, you know what? Those standardized tests, we did fine without them last year. I think we'll be fine without them this year. You know, a new normal, maybe.
Monitor and adjust has never meant more than it does right now.
Right.
I just want to say, thank y'all. I know that took a lot of hard work to throw all that together in such a short time.
And I've been following, most of the people participating are on Twitter and they're real excited. And they, they feel very confident. So, guess what? It makes me feel very confident that the people who are frontline feel so good about it. So, I think they're working really hard. Thank you, Mr. Bissell, thank you, Dr. Tally.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, board, we already had a motion from Ms. Green, we had a second from Mr. Anderson. We've now had comments, questions and discussion. And are any other comments, questions and discussion before we vote? Hearing none, all in favor of the e-learning program as presented by Mr. Bissell, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. Okay, we're now going to go to what was ten point two, which is now ten point four. It's the second reading of policy GCK, GCK dash R, which are professional staff assignments and transfers. We went over this in a good bit of detail last time and I think Mr. Stacy's now joining us. We'll go ahead and get a motion on the floor again and then we'll open it up for discussion. And this is one of three policies, they're all very similar. So, we're going to address all three of these at one time. So, do I hear a motion to approve policy GCK, GCK dash R, professional? I think it's professional one, or I, staff assignments and transfers? I don't know that's how it's written. Do I have a motion to approve this policy? Okay, we've got a motion from Ms. Green, do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Oswald. Okay, now we're going to turn it over to Mr. Stacy. Mr. Stacy, you want to walk us through this and then we'll see if we have any questions or comments and then we'll take a vote.
Yes, again, this is just a policy to kind of update our practice. It really talks about electronic transfers more than anything else. We do everything online now and the old policy, we had paper forms that had to be completed. So, this just gets us more into the, the current times.
So funny, today of all times, we definitely need everything we can on the computer, don't we?
Yes, ma'am.
So, board, are there any questions or comments regarding this policy before we take a vote? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the policy as presented by Mr. Stacy, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. We're now going to go to what was ten point three, which is now ten point five, which is the second reading of policy GCO. GCO dash R is the evaluation of administrators. Do I hear a motion to approve policy GCO, GCO dash R, evaluation of administrators as presented?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, we now have a motion and a second on the floor. Are there any, Mr. Stacy, you want to just tee this one up and then we'll open it up for discussion?
Yes, ma'am, basically the change here is that we're just making it more with the new requirements for PDEP, for the principal evaluation. And then we've added a piece in here about district office, district office administrators. And people other than principals and their evaluation.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Are there any questions or comments about this policy with the changes that Mr. Stacy has presented? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. We're now going to go to what was ten point four, which is now ten point six. Second reading of policy GCOA, evaluation of instructional staff. Do I hear a motion to approve policy GCOA, evaluation of instructional staff as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green, we now have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Stacy, you want to walk us through this one?
And again, this was a policy that you had just visited just recently, within the last year. What we recognize is we've left out one little piece of it where we have teachers that might be on an annual contract. In their fourth or fifth year, international teachers. And so, this just shores that up with making sure that teachers that are on annual contact, contract can be evaluated using a GBE annual-based process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Are there any questions or comments regarding policy GCOA? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, all in favor of policy GCOA, evaluation as, of instructional staff as presented, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries and it is unanimous. If Dr. Tally could come back in? We're now going to go to what was ten point five, it's now ten point seven. This is not an action item board, but I did ask Dr. Tally if she would just give us a little bit of an update. And since we've already approved so many trips, just kind of talk about the district's position. And I'd get this on the record and in the minutes. So, at this time, we normally would have second reading of student travel, or first reading of student travel requests. Which as you know, at this time, we're suspending all decisions on travel at this time. So, Dr. Tally, you want to just give us just a little bit of an update? Because I know some parents have questioned like trips maybe in May, the money they've paid out, things like that.
Yes, ma'am, happy to, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have had a busy time relative to student travel since last, last week. We met, we did have some trips that were scheduled on March the eighth, ninth and eleventh. And I, you remember at the last board meeting, you heard from a student who said, please don't cancel that trip. Those students did go on that trip to DC and to New York and so far, everything was fine, there were no complications. But then we did begin to, at Dr. Little's direction, I began calling principals and said, you need to think about canceling or rescheduling. Looking at rescheduling some of your trips. So, they immediately started doing that and then the dominoes started falling. Not only in countries around the world, but major cities, as you know. We had a principals meeting on Wednesday. A lot of parents were calling in, they, they wanted to know about, do I get a refund? Is it safe for my child to go? Teachers were asking, is it safe for me to go? So, Dr. Little, we, we, we started calling, if you had a vendor like EF Tours for international trips. We pled our case and said, listen, we don't, we don't feel safe about these trips, what, can you work with us? We immediately canceled a trip to Atlanta. Pillion Middle School had a group of seventh graders going to Coca-Cola and the Civil Rights Museum. And as you know, Fulton County closed because they had a confirmed case. So, Ms. Bradley was able to cancel that trip. They have rescheduled, so they got, they got full vouchers to take that trip later, which was great. So, we felt good about that. So, on Wednesday, when we met with the principals, Dr. Little provided them with a sample letter. Because he, as the superintendent said, we're canceling all internet. because he, as a superintendent said, we're canceling all international travel. And so EF Tours said, if you can give us a letter from your superintendent, then we can give you what they call a peace of mind policy that allows for refunds and/or rescheduling of the trip. So we felt very good about that and appreciated Dr. Little quickly putting that together for, for our principals. So all in all, and then I will tell you, some of our competitions were canceled for us. We didn't have to cancel those. It's disappointing to students and to their sponsors, but we feel pretty good about the safety of our students.
That's great. Any questions or comments for Dr. Tally? I know we've all had questions about that, so thank you. I wanted to get that on the record. At this time, we are now going to go to what was 10.7, which is now 10.8, and it's the 2019-2020 Instructional Materials Adoption, Adoption Recommendations. And do I hear a motion to approve the 2019-2020 Instructional Materials Adoption Recommendations as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board approve the recommendations of the District Instructional Materials Adoption Committees as district adopted instructional materials for 2020-2021 for social studies, grades three through five, social studies, grades seven, mathematics, grades K through five, and mathematics, grades six through eight.
Thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do we have a second? Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. And let's go back to Dr. Tally and have an, an update on this, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. For members of the Board who've been on the Board for a while, you know this, but I think I, I feel compelled to say this to new Board members, this, these adoptions of new materials are contingent on state funding. Just because if you were to approve the recommendations tonight doesn't necessarily mean we'll purchase the materials. I know Mr. Oswald's aware of that. But if the money is available, we certainly will, and we don't anticipate the money not being available. I think it's important that you understand the process, and I want to thank Albert Robertson, our social studies coordinator, and Hillary Morgan, our mathematics coordinator, who, who led these committees, these district textbook committees composed of teachers from all of our schools. The state always holds a caravan, a public caravan, for stakeholders all over the state to participate, to review the materials. And then school reps, schools come back together in a committee, as a district committee, and they review the materials, have a rubric they use, and then they go back to their schools and share that with their teachers, and then they reach a consensus on what adoptions they choose. Is that, I wanted you to know, that's how we, we came upon the adoptions. You're probably going to ask me, so I'll go ahead and answer it. Are these materials online? They are. They all have online components anymore. A textbook company would be not very smart not to have that component. So we feel really good about our adoptions, and I am seeing your approval this evening.
Okay.
Dr. Tally, do we know who the publishers are?
Yes, yes, we do. Be happy to give you that.
Okay.
For the social studies, grade three, the publisher is Studies Weekly. For social studies, four and five, the publisher is Pearson. For social studies, grade seven, the publisher is Teachers Curriculum Institute. For mathematics, the publisher, K5, publisher is Curriculum Associates. And for mathematics, six through eight, the publisher is Houghton Mifflin Hardcore. You're welcome.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, hearing none. Do I, we have the motion on the floor to approve the 2020-2021 Instructional Materials Adoption Recommendations as presented by Dr. Tally. We now have a motion and a second, so all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. So we are now through with our action items, and we, the 11.0 superintendent's report, is there anything you want to jump in on there, Dr. Little, since we took that out, but is...
I do not.
Okay, so we're not going to go there? 12.0, Board, included in your packet was the 12.1 Monthly General Fund Financial Report, the 12.2 Monthly General Fund Budget Transfers, the 12.3 Monthly Capital Projects Report, the 12.4 Monthly Unauthorized Procurements Report, and the 12.5 Quarterly Grant Award Report. And before we adjourn, I just want to say tonight, we really missed Dr. Powers. I, I want everyone to know, he is on the front line of this coronavirus situation. He, in fact, was part of the group that was working with the governor today, and I, I want to take a minute and thank Lexington Medical Center. I know Greg has Mr. Augsberger and Dr. Powers on speed dial, and they have helped, really given us some good advice, and we're only as strong as our community, and we really appreciate that. Also want to just put in, just say, we really appreciate Dr. Guyton, too, because all the, all of our healers that are on the front line, it just means a lot for what all they're doing for us. Today is St. Patrick's Day, so instead of our typical adjournment, I'm going to close with an Irish blessing.